Distinguished participants, dear colleagues, Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. We are pleased to welcome you today to this public hearing session on the newly issued exposure draft of I O F financial account and standard and transfer of assets between investment groups. This event is held in collaboration with three major partners, Behind Association of Banks, the Arab Monetary Fund and United Arab Emirates Bank Federation. We would like to thank the partners for their efforts in extending the support in organizing today's public hearing. The public hearing is one of the mandatory steps in the standards development process at I O F. It is an opportunity for us to interact with and benefit from the knowledge, experience and wisdom of professional individuals and experts of the industry. The public hearings of I O F exposure drafts are critical to ensure the final standards slip up to market expectations. To provide a very brief history of the making of the standard, in 2018, the I O F Accounting Board initiated, in addition to working on issuing new standards, a project to review and revise all existing I O F financial accounting standards. As a result, the board observed that fast twenty-one disclosure of transfer of assets requires a limited revision, especially to align with the revised I O F conceptual framework for financial reporting and revised fast one general presentation and disclosures in the financial statements. Both revised framework and revised fast one eye in effect and are available on the I O F website. To make this event more interesting and interactive, we encourage live participation. So if the participants have any questions, you may present your questions by clicking on the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. So you can present your questions directly to the speaker. You can also type in your questions in the Q and A tab. Now, without further ado, let me invite our physical agenda, Mr. Mr. Pansari to present exposure draft and walk you through its main contents. But the matter flows on.
Thank you very much, Sister Farida. A'uzbillahimnash shaitanu rajim, bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Rabishthahli sadri, wiyasirli amri, wahlulukta tam illisani yafbahu pali. Ladies and gentlemen, distinguished guests, Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. It's indeed a greatest pleasure for me, like always, to be in front of you and presenting one of our, you know, it's like, it's like if you take a normal example, it's more like a, you know, artist presenting his artwork, again, not as alone, but as A O F I am talking about. So it's more like we presented for the public to get an understanding of as to how people look at it. I always quote one of the important quotations from our earlier governance board chairman, that standard setting is not a process that you can complete in a boardroom. Means that obviously the most important part of it, including research and development of the standard takes place in the boardroom of the respective technical board of I O F, in this case, the I O F Accounting Board. But, but the, but the, but the most important input that is needed is to get stakeholders involved in form of public hearings, roundtables, workshops, and obviously in form of inviting written comments on the standard, so that we are able to understand how industry thinks about it. Similarly, these public hearings also work like in, in, like in the, in the, in the direction of actually helping the implementation of our standards in order to people understand what the standard is about and how it is going to impact their, their financial statements or their operations or their, their, their governance framework, et cetera, as the case may be. So I do not want to take that much time on this one. Only thing is that, as Sister Farida already mentioned, that maximum interaction and the maximum input is what is expected from this and as far as possible, we'll try to like take questions by allowing you to open up your, your, your mics and screens as well. But, but, but if the time does not permit, we will be taking questions only by Q and A tab. Another important thing I would like to mention that every comment that you make here is very important for us. And even if I, I try to respond some of those comments and right, try to clarify some of them and clarify your understanding in view of what discussions have taken place at the level of the, of the board, the working group, the Sharia committee, et cetera. But the, 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 the purpose of getting your comments is to make sure that we, we get the feedback and that whole feedback irrespective of any answer provided to you or any clarification provided to you, which is part of the process, is still all the feedback is taken to the working group and to the board. So please feel free to, to be, to be interactive and to be, to be contributing as much as possible. I think Sister Farida, if you can confirm, this is the third public hearing on this standard? I, I think so. And this one, we are holding only three public hearings, am I right?
Yes, this is the third public hearing and the Arabic one will be held maybe in October.
Okay, so only the Arabic one will be held after this, otherwise this is the final public hearing for this standard. Some of you might have even early adopted, you know, maybe attended the earlier public hearing on this topic also and may have got some of the opportunity to, to attend some public hearing on the connected projects. The connected projects include the quasi-equity of balance sheet asset management and control standard. These all four together are part of one combined project of revision of fast twenty-seven and fast on transfer of assets. So considering the significance of this one, I would request all of you to be attentive and interactive. Now coming to a little bit like, you know, about the need and rationale for this standard. If we already has standard on transfer of assets, financial accounting standard to transfer of assets. So when we were doing our financial accounting standards revision project, we identified that this standard is good, but it might need some limited revision, limited scope revision. Now, limited scope revision was necessary because we were revising the quasi-equity of balance sheet asset management and control standards. And we have already revised the financial accounting standard number one and the framework. So we had to align them together. And in addition to that, there are certain significant issues that we noted related to Sharia compliance, like for example, the tangibility in case of transfers or the risk of buyback in case of transfers between pools or between the shareholders versus the investment pool. So considering all these things as, as like, you know, as relevant to this subject, we decided initially to, initially to, to have a limited scope revision. But I would say that now it is slightly more than limited scope revision. Although the main requirements of the standard remain intact, but some of the disclosure requirements and some of the accounting policies related requirements and some of the treatment related requirements or Sharia compliance related requirements have been enhanced and improved. I can see a comment in the, in the, in the, in the Q and A tab, anonymous attendee. What is meant by quasi-equity? Assalamualaikum and welcome. And first my request for everybody to please rename yourselves with your name and if possible, also with the name of your organization. So whenever you put a question in tab or if you mention, if you raise your hand, we are able to identify you properly. So your name might be, might be, might be good enough in most situation. But in some situations, if you want to mention your organization name also, you can do that. And you can always do it by, by renaming yourself in Zoom. This is an easy option available. Now, quick answer to that, because since it is important, according to I O F standards, financial common standards and the framework of I O F, there are several Islamic finance transaction structures which have, which have a characteristic of equity primarily, but also have a characteristic of liability. So for example, when you open an account in Islamic bank on as a saving account or as a deposit account, most of these accounts are based on Mudarba and these are based on unrestricted Mudarba contract, which means that the bank has the right to use your money for your benefit eventually, but as per bank's discretion on an unrestricted basis. This becomes an unrestricted investment account or is based on unrestricted Mudarba contract. Now, if you see that according to the core contract, core characteristics of the contract, you are, you are taking the risk on the underlying assets, the risks and rewards of the underlying assets. Means that any, you are entitled to get profit from that and you are, you, you are subject to any risk on that. Any profit on that deposit is not guaranteed. Even the principal amount of that profit, that investment or that deposit is not guaranteed. So this is completely different from the mechanism where you have the conventional deposits in which the interest as well as the principal both are guaranteed. So here, the first thing is that these have a characteristic of equity because this, the, these instruments share the underlying, the, the, the risks and rewards of the underlying assets and the net assets, they have interest in the net assets of the, of the, of the investment pool or of the, of the institution, whatever the case may be. So this is the primary characteristic of such instrument that is being equity. However, these instruments also have a, an element of liability. Now, according to I F R S, if any instrument, any instrument, even if having equity characteristics, has a put option, means that either it has a redemption or a fixed date of redemption can be done through fixed date, fixed maturity date, or it can be done prior to fixed maturity date, or it can be done on demand like in case of saving accounts. So in all these situations, because of having a maturity or a put option, the element of liability is existing. According to I F R S, all the items having all the items of financial statement or elements of financial statement of products and, and balances that have a put option are classified as liability. However, according to Sharia, these instruments that we are talking about have a primary characteristic of equity and they are not liability because they are not, the principal or the interest is not guaranteed or profit thereon is not guaranteed. So according, according to the A O F's framework, equity of restricted investment accounts have always been kept separate from the equity as well as from the liabilities as a, as a, as a third component between equity and liability. Several years back, when you have revised its financial, financial accounting framework on fast one, since we identified that in addition to the unrestricted investment account, there are other type of similar instruments as well. So we came up with a broader, broader definition called, I call it quasi-equity, which includes unrestricted investment accounts, some type of Sukuk, some other instruments like Mousharka, et cetera, as well. I, I, I know that I have taken a bit time on defining this thing, but I think it might be quite useful for some of the participants who are new to the subject. With that, I would request again that you may kindly rename yourself so that every time a person puts a question is identifiable. Thank you very much. Sister, Sister Farida, I can note some of the board members and senior people joining in, particularly any board member as of like, you know, like brother on the mirror, I can see him on the, on the, on the, on the list. So if any other board member or have also joined in, you can just try to update them. My request is that please kindly upgrade brother, brother on the mirror as, as one of the panelists. We have a hand raised by Brother Muhammad Khalid Mukin. Can you allow Brother Muhammad Khalid Mukin to open up his mic and is it necessary to upgrade as panelist or you can just allow as a attendee also to like you switch on the mic? Anyway, I think I can see that you have upgraded by the Muhammad Khalid Mukin as panelist. Subhanallah, Muhammad Khalid Mukin, please go ahead with your question. Brother Khalid Mukin, you have a question, please go ahead. Your hand is raised? Okay, I think, I think he has put a question, put just alarm in the chat box. So I think we can move ahead. Okay, so with regard to this topic of this standard, the one of the biggest challenges for Islamic financial institutions is that at times they have more than, they have more than one investment pools or they have different type of stakeholders involved in the entity. So for example, and it is quite possible that an Islamic financial institution like Islamic bank may have assets which are funded by the, by the shareholders alone versus assets which are funded by the, the unrestricted investment accounts. Similarly, it is also possible that some banks may have more than one pools of unrestricted investment accounts. Having more than one pool, again, this is not my subject for today, but having more than one pool at times is important to match the expected returns or to, to, to segregate the assets with different risk characteristics and, and keeping, keeping the investment accounts which are like, you know, taking those higher risk in that one. At times it is for, it is done because of short-term maturity, like for financial institutions, at times short-term maturity investment pools are created. At times you have separate, separate investment pools for, for high net worth individuals having long-term assets with long-term deposits. So the maturity matching, the return matching, risk and reward matching, segregation of risk and rewards. So there are different reasons why different, different Islamic financial institutions, Islamic banks may have different investment pools within the same bank. Similarly, it is also possible that a bank may have a investment pool for restricted investment, unrestricted investment accounts, but also it may have an additional investment pool for, 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 for tier-two Sukuk, which are, which may also be based on restricted Mudarba. I'm just giving you example. The point is that in most of Islamic financial institutions, particularly the Islamic banks, it is quite common to have more than one set of stakeholders. And at times, all the stakeholders such as all such stakeholders who are participatory in nature means that they are taking risk on the assets and having the profits and the risk of losses. They actually, they actually are not sharing the same set of assets. Rather, the underlying assets for different stakeholders become different, which is not commonly referred to as investment pool. Or only sort of like, you know, pool. Pool management itself has lot of governance issues and governance challenges. A O F right now is working on a governance standard for investment accounts also, which will be addressing some of the issues related to this one. Actually, the standard is towards finalization as in form of exposure draft. Probably in the next meeting of the, if we don't export that exposure draft will be finalized. That also covers some of the aspects of transfer of assets from the governance side. Right now, in this standard, we are talking about transfer of assets between pools and between shareholders and different stakeholders in form of, in, in form of like, in form of our internal sort of sale contract or execution of a internal transfer again, exchange, exchange-based transfer. So considering all these things, it is, it is, it is like, you know, it is very imperative to have proper financial reporting requirements for that and, and that financial reporting requirement are not only for the, important for the purpose of disclosures, but they are also important for the purpose of selection of right accounting policies and right accounting treatments and assigning the right values at the time of transfer. This, assigning the right values at the time of transfer is very much important for ensuring justice and fairness between the stakeholders. So for example, if there is a high-return yielding asset which I transfer from a common investment pool to shareholders, it, it may create a conflict of interest that now shareholders are getting higher return as compared to the investment account holders who are getting a low return because their average rate of return on the pool of assets reduces. Similarly, it is possible that there is a high net worth individual and for which Islamic financial institution want to create a separate pool. And that pool, all major, all major problem, I won't say major, rather, all high-return yielding assets are transferred to that pool. So these things are, again, as I mentioned, these have their own governance issues and Sharia issues and fairness and equity issues. But additionally, the accounting practices that are to be there are to be very much, very much clear with, with regard to what will be the values assigned, what accounting policies will be applied on these type of transfers, how to ensure, ensure fairness, fairness and fairness and equity on this one, as well as how to, how to, how to, how to manage risk at the greater level. So there are so many challenges with that, some of that are discussed in this standard and obviously remaining will be, will be discussed in the governance standard. Now, I would like to take you through the standard. So if you allow me to screen, I'm, I'm allowed to share my screen. So I believe you all can see my screen. Now I can see some comments in the Q and A tab. Okay, the first one is from Hikmat Amin. What is the difference in financial is for financial institution between owners equity, quasi-equity and all balance sheet asset management of an institution? Brother Hikmat Amin, in, what do you mean here by financial risk? Because financial risk is not one type of risk, what, how we define it. So, so the, the point is that, that what I was saying, if your question is related to what I was saying and I was not very clear to you, in that situation, I would like to clarify that, that the risk and reward and related to different assets are different. And you need to match them with the risk-taking appetite of the investment account holder. So for example, you have some equity, some investments in the, in the stock market, which is subject to too much fluctuation. Investment account holders, unrestricted investment account holders who open up accounts with you normally are not putting the money for only, for, 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 for this type of activity. Because at times, when you talk about a bank, a person investing with a bank has, has a back-end objective in mind with regard to, you know, safeguard of the money, safekeeping of the money. So the safekeeping of the money may not be possible if the Islamic financial institution can start utilizing the monies of the quasi-equity holders, that is, unrestricted investment account holders on a very risky transactions or at least a common investors. However, some Islamic bank, Islamic banks may have off-balance sheet asset management under a restricted investment account mechanism in which they can have stock market investments or, or high-risk investments also because high-risk investment also normally entail high, high returns. So that, that has to match with the risk appetite of the, of the investment, of, of the investment account holder. So investment account holders risk appetite is relevant. Now shareholders can take greater risk on stock, on stock investment. Similarly, for example, there is Islamic bank that opens up its, its subsidy in another country. So would it be appropriate that, that investment goes out of the, in this restricted investment, unrestricted investment accounts? Or would it be important that this investment is taken out from the shareholders funds only? I'm just giving you some examples. So the financial risk of the underlying assets are important and the risk appetite of the investors are important and both of them should match with each other. I hope I am able to clarify your, against your query. But if it still is not clear, then please explain your question in more detail, particularly emphasizing what you mean by financial risk here. Thank you very much for your question. There is comment from Sister Galia Tushamri, Assalamualaikum and welcome sister. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Does the transfer of asset between investment pools necessitate the termination of contract signed with the clients and changes? For example, when transferring asset between off-balance sheet accounts and quasi-equity that will lead to a change in the nature of the signed contract between Islamic financial institution and the customer from a restricted Mudarba contract, for example, to a contract of unrestricted Mudarba. Sister, what happens is that it is not that you do not normally, when we talk about transfer of asset, we do not talk about transfer of the investment account holder. So at times, yes, unrestricted investment account holders are also transferred from one investment pool within the urea, unrestricted investment accounts to another unrestricted investment pool. This is possible on a rare basis, not commonly. But that does not change the type of relationship. But the example that you have mentioned is changing the type of relationship. So it does not happen like this. But yes, it is also, it is still possible that some assets are transferred from the, from the off-balance sheet asset management to on-balance sheet asset. So this is, or vice versa. This is a common practice, but sister, it is not, we are not talking about transfer of the investment account holder from one pool to another. We are right now talking about the transfer of the underlying assets, which mean that the contract with the respective party remains intact. Now, what happens that, for example, there is a restricted investment pool where there were like, you know, five, five million BD of investment. Now, there was a one customer that comes and he says that I want to withdraw my one million BD, which means that the investment pool will become four million BD. Now, investment pool will not be having assets of, cash of one million BD. It will be having assets of five million BD. So from where the cash comes? One option is that the investment pool in caches, one of the, one of the investment, investments, investment assets like equalling to one million BD. But it is possible that you don't find the right customer or you don't find the right price. Or if it is a, if it is a transaction of financing, for example, if it is Sukuk, you can try to sell it. But if it's a financing transaction, you can't sell that transaction easily in the market. So what happens that you need to bring cash out of the shareholders pool and transfer this asset to the shareholders pool? Or it is possible that the same day, some of the customers were added on the unrestricted investment account. So you needed one million BD of, one million BD of assets more in the urea pool. So from the rea pool that is off-balance sheet, you bring that asset to the urea pool which is on balance sheet. So the nature of the contract of the investment account holder does not change sister. Only the underlying assets change. And underlying asset change normally is because of some reason. For example, as I mentioned, that one of the customers having in cashman. Another situation was that one of the customers may come and make additional investment. So now, for example, in the urea pool, you've got two billion, two million BDs additional today. Now what happens that you need to then transfer some assets from the, for sure, you need to try to use that money for creating new assets. But at times you need to transfer the, some of these assets from another pool. Similarly, the bank is short of liquidity. It needs to create a vakala or Mudarba based pool for financial institutions. So that vakala based pool, which can be off-balance sheet and Mudarba based pool, which is on balance sheet, both may need some assets to be transferred from the common urea pool. So these are the common examples, we'll go through the standard, which will identify a different type of, like, you know, it's transfer that actually take place for which you need to set up your accounting policies. Even, even other than Islamic banks, this type of transactions also happen in some other Islamic financial institutions also. For example, in case of Takaful. In Takaful, you have the shareholders fund, you have the participants Takaful fund and in case of family Takaful, you also have a participants investment fund. Combining these things, you might need to apply different sort of, different sort of like, you know, a different, a different side type of account, a different accounting policies to make sure that the transactions take place in, on the basis of fairness and equity. Sister Galia has another question. Will the application of the standard and the transfer between investment pools affect the priority of investment funds? Especially when transferring between a positive equity pool and equity pool, which lead to the investment priority being for shareholder fund and not the funds of the quasi-equity accounts? Sister, it's an excellent question, but this is not the issue of the accounting standard. Accounting standard only says that develop accounting policy which is consistently used and it is based on fairness and equity. And then it says that you have to disclose that accounting policy and you have to disclose the transfers. So what happens that, you know, transparency and disclosure itself works as a deterrent against, against incorrect practices. So that is what we are expecting from this one. However, whether to give priority or not to give priority, the quasi-equity standard of I O F and current fast twenty-seven, they don't say you, you give priority to this one or that one. They say that you disclose to whom you are giving priority. Because it's an accounting standard, accounting standard cannot dictate that you gave priority to this one or that one. Now, who can dictate about the priority? Number one, it is the Sharia requirements which define that you give priorities based on the mutual benefit, not based on one party getting a benefit. Which is based on governance practices on which we are developing the governance standard. It is based on the regulatory practices where regulator actually intervenes and put regulations, how to do this thing. And also it depends on the contractual arrangement that in some situation, the contracts with some of the parties actually put a priority in the contractual requirements. So the giving the priority sister is not an accounting issue. Accounting issue is reflecting what is correct. If the transaction is not taking place at fair value and fair value is the justice and equity, if it is not taking on fair value, then you need to disclose it's not happening on fair value and you need to disclose the difference between fair value and the transfer value. But this is accounting, this is. But this is accounting, this is financial reporting. Financial reporting reflects what is happening in the business. Financial reporting has better transparency and disclosure, so that people can take informed decisions. So, if there is an institution who is always giving priority to the investment, uh, to the shareholders, this can be identified from the financial statements. A good analyst can identify one from the financial statements. But accounting standard cannot say do this or do, don't do this. Accounting standard can say that normally this transaction can take, takes, takes place on fair value. But so, if you do it at fair value, disclose. If you don't do it at fair value, disclose the accounting policy which is applied and disclose the effect of the difference between the fair value and others. So, from that perspective, accounting standard can work as a deterrent through having better transparency and disclosure. But it cannot work as a replacement for the governance, Sharia, regulatory and contractual requirements. Doctor Mohammed Mukhtar Khan, can AOFI take the initiative of starting Islamic finance in India at government level? Brother Doctor Mohammed Mukhtar Khan, thank you very much for joining us. And I believe you join, you are joining from India and you belong originally to India. Thank you very much for that. Uh, sir, I think that some of the Islamic finance initiatives are on the way in, in, in India at the private level, but without, actually because there are some firms and there are some, uh, some microfinance activity. And there is, again, India is probably world's, uh, world's second or third largest Muslim population. And according to some people, it's the world's biggest or the largest Muslim population. So, from that perspective, it is very important that, uh, that Muslims of India can try to do it. But I can tell you, to be honest, uh, as per my understanding, in Kerala, there is a investment bank sort of, that has been based on Islamic finance. There are some Islamic Sharia-compliant mutual funds, some corporate, cooperative societies, some microfinance activity. But, uh, but, uh, you know, this thing has to be, uh, 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 this has to be done like, you know, as a, as a initiative. In all, even, even the Muslim countries, I, I'm not saying Islamic countries, I'm saying Muslim countries. Means that Muslim-dominated and Muslim-majority countries, even some of them did not start it at the government level or rather, most of them did not start it at the government level. Government level functioning of Islamic finance started when the commercial benefit was identified. I can assure you that as soon as it starts, the commercial benefit can be note, can be observed even by the Indian government. Uh, Russia has much smaller Muslim population, uh, UK has much smaller Muslim population. Uh, Sir, Singapore has Muslim minority, Germany has much smaller Muslim population, France has much smaller Muslim population. But all these countries that I'm talking about have government-level involvement now in Islamic finance, because they feel that it has the benefit of in financial inclusion for their respective populations, as well as they have an opportunity to attract investments which are based on, uh, which are based on Sharia compliant, uh, you know, uh, Sharia-compliant banking or Sharia-compliant finance. So, they can attract more and more investments in their respective countries. Sir, Russia is talking about food security. India has a great opportunity that if Muslims of India take some initiative with regard to having a financial Islamic finance model for establishing food security for the region, I think they may have a great opportunity. I'm just mentioning this thing that AOFI as a standard-setting body may not have any influence on any government or can not approach any of the governments, either Muslim government or Muslim minority government. But what we can do and what we can assure you is that in any new market where Islamic finance is being developed, AOFI is available to support, uh, for, for, uh, support the regulators, the governments and the market participants. We have, uh, significant focus on developing markets. We, we work on the capacity building in those countries. We work with, uh, we, 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 we promote our standards being adopted as a starting point, which gives these countries a better opportunity to start Islamic finance operations uh, based on tried and tested global practices. So, we are open for all these, uh, like, you know, sort of collaborations with any government as well as private initiatives in the developing markets for Islamic finance. There we, we, we have, uh, we have some, some working group members and some, you know, some collaboration with some, some of the experts from India, either based in India or based in some other parts of the Muslim world. But, uh, Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala says that, uh, in the Holy Quran, I don't, uh, I, uh, that, then, and, and the, 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 the meaning of that is that Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala had never changes the, the situation of a nation or ummah that doesn't like, you know, uh, try to change themselves. So, this is something that has to come from the grassroots level. And then obviously, AOFI and all the Islamic finance infrastructure bodies and institutions like Islamic Development Bank, et cetera, can, can come and he- help on that. One most important thing, as I mentioned, I gave you just one example of food security. But in that, India has a huge industrial sector, it has huge services sector. So, it has great opportunity for investments under Islamic finance modes. So, that is something on which actually, uh, internal initiatives are needed. I, I well understand that in some parts of India, there are, uh, ve- very, like, you know, Muslim communities are comparatively more involved in business and hold significant influence in the economics of those states. Uh, maybe, maybe, maybe Kerala, I, uh, may, uh, and maybe Gujarat might be good examples for that. Even there are states where Muslim population is quite high, so there can be opportunities on that part. My point is, some initiative has to come from inside and then international, international infrastructure institutions for Islamic finance can help that, Insha Allah. Thank you very much for being with us. Uh, Sister Galia Dushamri, okay, my pleasure, Sister. Okay, now, Brother Fajrullah Barati, what are the ways to transfer a facet from one investment pool to another investment pool? And what could be accounting treatment? Brother, uh, brother, uh, if you allow me to go through the standard, you will get answer to your questions. So, I'll answer it in due course. Sister Rajda Annapur also, again, she is, uh, she joins us from India and welcome Sister. So, yes, even the mutual funds offered in India that are Sharia-based are nam- named are ethical funds and not Islamic for obvious reasons. Uh, I can simply tell that our prayers are with you, our brothers and sisters from India. And we hope that being one of the biggest Muslim populations, you are able to have more of Islamic finance. Uh, uh, so with regard to this, uh, I, I, I can, I cannot say anything more except for yes, things are happening. And yes, these are named at times like, you know, not as Islamic. But this is happening even in some of the Muslim countries. I can tell you some of the Muslim countries having a secular constitution are not calling it Islamic finance or Sharia finance. They are calling it participation finance, uh, or, or ethical finance. So, these are the, these are the limitations everywhere. Only, the only thing is that we need to work our part, uh, in, for this. Uh, Anonymous attendee, again, ICF Indian Centre for Islamic Finance is carrying out efforts to implement in India, moreover, under Cooperative Society Act, financial services are being provided successfully. Thank you very much for, uh, updating and confirming my understanding. Uh, sis, we have, we have comment from, uh, from Solid Tayyilah. Uh, and again, my apologies, you know, people from around the globe actually join in. And at times, you know, I feel sorry that if I am unable to, uh, unable to, you know, pronounce your name very correctly. So, my apologies in advance for, uh, for, to all of you. So, thank you for your lecture, I'm Solid Tayyilah from Sudan. My question is, how can we disclose and manage the losses arising from the risk and damage of asset because of crisis and war? Example, the devil, damage of bank sectors in Sudan. Brother Saleh, uh, it's a very good question, but unfortunately, it's not related to this topic. So, the problem is that if I go in details about this issue, it will impact, uh, it will impact the today's public hearing and will reduce the time available for the core subject of today. So, with, with my due apologies, I would like to refrain from answering your question. If in the end, time allows, we will allow you to put this question again. Brother Ismail Abdurrahim, thank you for your presentation. Um, it is our pleasure, Brother Ismail. But to be honest, till now, I haven't started my presentation. So, thank you again in advance for that. And I hope that it's not your leaving message. I hope that you are going to continue with us. Thank you again. And Doctor Mukhtar, uh, again, uh, again, uh, I, I, again, since, again, it's not related to the today's topic. So, I would just like to mention that you can always approach us at AOFI uh, to have any assistance that you would like with regard to capacity building, guidance of the products, et cetera, as well. So, but I will not like to discuss further this issue again, because it is not related to our today's subject. But again, thank you for joining us. And, uh, you have Sister, Sister Farida, if you can provide the contact details for AOFI for the comments, uh, accounting@AOFI.com and anybody who want to approach me for any of the initiatives in their respective country, et cetera, you can put my email address in the chat window as well, please. So, anybody who want to approach AOFI can approach me by my email address, ohansari@AOFI.com. I have requested Sister, uh, Sister Farida to put my email address on that, as well as any comments that you want to provide on this standard or any other exposure draft, you can do it. Uh, you, you can do it quickly. Sister Farida, you can do it quickly and, uh, then you can provide, everybody can provide comments on, uh, on these email addresses and approach us at my email address. There is comment from Brother Nisar Al-Bikawi and he is thanking us. Thank you very much, brother, for your prayers. Uh, Rahul Chitra Vedi, is the purpose of target fund needs to be same as the original one? A very good question. Uh, actually, it is not always necessary, but the contractual, uh, like, uh, but, but, but the, but the uh, the contractual arrangements are normally different. So, or, or the risk appetite is different. At times, the contractual arrangement is different. So, for example, if you are transferring from restricted investment account to a restricted investment around, account, uh, the, 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 uh, the contractual arrangement between the investors is different. Uh, but the target funds, uh, normally, uh, uh, normally, target fund may, may have different risk, uh, uh, risk profiles and may have different investment objectives as well. So, it is not always the same. Uh, technically speaking, at times, uh, they will not be the same. So, it's not required to be the same, but rather, in the most cases, it may not be the same. Thank you very much for a good comment, question. Uh, Ismail Abdurrahim, uh, brother, has a question. How does the transfer of asset between investment pools impact overall financial stability and risk management of the organization? Uh, Brother Ismail, this is an excellent question, to be honest. The point is, number one, about the financial stability. So, the question is that at times, these transfers are, take, uh, take place for the greater financial stability of the institution. So, for example, there is an institution which has, uh, which has only one, uh, let's take example, there is a institution that has only one investment pool for urea accounts and only shareholders fund the fixed assets and other assets, okay? Now, the, the institution has lack of liquidity right now, it needs liquidity. What happens? It may go to the market or interbank market. It may take money, okay, it may take money on Tawaro basis, which is not, uh, not preferred mode by AOFI and it is not preferred mode by a lot of scholars and some of the countries even prohibit Tawaro. So, now what option it does have normally, other than Tawaro? The other option is, it will go to the market and get funds based on Vakalla or Mudarba. Most common, other than Tawaro. Again, Tawaro not allowed in all markets and not preferred by AOFI standards. So, now what happens that if you take money on Vakalla or Mudarba basis, you need to have an asset for that. So, for that, you will transfer some high, high-yielding assets and more secure assets. So, for example, you will take out some of the Sukuk, which are highly liquid, less risky, uh, have a higher rating. And you will take those uh, Sukuk and transfer them to a different pool called FI pool, financial institution pool. And the money that you are taking from other financial institution will be invested under Vakalla mode or Mudarba mode in this pool. So, now this transfer of asset actually manages the liquidity risk. It helps in overall financial stability of the institution, because otherwise, the institution would have been subject to a, uh, is subject to, uh, 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 subject to liquidity risk and it may even, even, uh, fail to fulfill its obligations with regard to the cash payments to the, uh, urea account holders who are withdrawing. Now, all assets in the urea pool are not in cashable at the time, because financings particularly, investments in Sukuk and others, maybe have, may have an active market where you can sell them. But for others, you may not even have this thing. At times, it is possible that you have, uh, available to, uh, you had to maturity Sukuk. So, even if they are tradable, but you don't want to trade them, because you have had to maturity. And if you, if you, if you do not comply with the head-to-patuity conditions, you will not be able to keep other Sukuk in, in future with, for, as, as had to maturity. So, it means that you cannot sell those instruments. You can only transfer those instruments from the common pool, you common urea pool to the special pool for high-net worth individuals or for FI, because you want to manage your risk. So, the, this is very well understood that the transfer of asset should normally take place in the greater interest of the overall institution, including all stakeholders. So, now, we know that FI's and high-net worth individual in this case are getting a higher return than the urea pool and some high-yielding and more risk-free or, uh, risk, uh, less risky assets have been transferred to them. Still, it was in the greater interest to have the overall financial stability and having better final liquidity risk management of the organization. Uh, Brother Ismail, I have given you just one or two examples to explain how it works. But I can assure you that, uh, that at times, pool management, uh, a very, very good mechanism of pool management is needed to have better risk management for the overall institution, because Islamic financial institutions are subject to unique risk because of these unique type of structures. And it is very important that you exercise very good risk management of practices and strategies, including a good system of pool management and a good system of, again, this thing should happen with the minimum impact on any of the party. It should be happening in the, in the greater interest of the institution. It should happen in the, with, with reasonable level of justice and equity. But I thank you very much, Brother Ismail, for having a very good question. Again, I would say that I would love to discuss this issue more, but this is not the accounting issue again. It is more of the governance issue and the regulatory issue. So, from that perspective, I would, I would stop here and will not go in further details. And I believe that the basic answer that I have provided to you would be good enough. Uh, Brother Saud Abdul, uh, uh, Al-Hudair has a question. How to make balance between booking the IFRS, uh, investment? IFRS and then I can't see, you have written IFRS double A investment account pools. I think, uh, uh, and, and its related accounting entries. Uh, the problem is if IFRS was covering all of these requirements, we don't need AOFI to develop accounting standards. That's very simple. AOFI has a clear accounting standard-setting strategy. AOFI says that we develop accounting standards only where the generally accepted accounting principles, which are mainly IFRS, are not addressing some of the Sharia issues or some of the unique business model-related challenges which come because of the business model of Islamic financial institution or because of the transaction structure. So, unfortunately, this is not something which is addressed by IFRS. Uh, like, you know, again, uh, like, you know, uh, AOFI does not want to say that IFRS standards are bad standards. No, we are just saying they are very good quality standard and we try to align with IFRS standards. But what we are doing is that we are trying to align our accounting standards with IFRS, except for the areas where we can do value addition. And that value addition comes only by ensuring compliance with Sharia principles and rules, like tangibility issue that we have discussed in this standard, that we will not find in IFRS, because IFRS is never concerned about that. Similarly, uh, the business model and the structure and then these internal transfers, IFRS does not have any accounting treatment with regard to the transfer of ownership between the internal stakeholders like this, as I'm talking about. It's about financial reporting to the outsiders. But for us, the outsiders include some of the investment, some of the stakeholders in Stakeholders like investment account holders whose interest is impacted by the internal transactions also. So these internal transactions from our perspective are uh are are to be addressed according to the A O P standards. I think brother, now you have clarified your question because of the typing error, you have corrected it. But in a nutshell, I believe that I have answered your question, brother. So now uh. This is like no nearly, we have spent half of the time and we have not yet started the presentation. So now please allow me to start the presentation and after every section I will take your comments. I would like to thank you all for like, you know, being here in big numbers and providing very good comments and questions. So with that, I'll take you forward. Uh preface and uh preface and uh like and this uh introduction part. I think I have covered most of it, but only one thing I would like to mention that the earlier standard uh. That the earlier standard uh number twenty one disclosure on transfer of assets. Uh it was about disclosure on transfer of assets while we are we have named it our transfer of assets. Why? Because uh we, in addition to disclosures, like we have we have covered the select. The guidance on selection and adoption of accounting policies and about some of the other general accounting treatments as well. So we have slightly increased the scope and the revised uh uh like accounting policies. Disclosure was required even earlier, but we have required for adoption and development of accounting policies. Ensuring as far as like you know fair treatment and having uh having a consistent application over a period of time. Uh we have aligned the terminology and definitions with the new framework. Uh and we have aligned the requirements with the new financial accounting standard one, particularly with regard to presentation and disclosures and the elements of financial statement. Financial reporting requirements are aligned with the Sharia requirements of transfer of assets for it has particularly. Uh two main issues uh about transfer of assets between by providing definition of tangibility ratio, monetary asset and non-monetary asset. Sister Farida, if you can just make a note of it, we have also considered avoidance of avoidance of buyback situation. So that is also again Sharia issues that are addressed are two in nature. One is about tangibility ratio and the second is about the buyback. Risk of buybacks or avoidance of buyback and et cetera, we have covered that. The objective of this uh and just please make a note of it because regarding buyback, we need to align with what we are writing in the. And in the governance standard also. So before finalization of this one, this is standard, we need to align with the views of the governance board also. Okay, so now uh I I'll not read the whole of the standard, but some of the important sections I will read out to you. Uh the objective of this standard is to establish the financial reporting principle that apply in respect of internal transfer of assets between various investment pools of an Islamic financial institution. As I mentioned, it applies mainly to the banks, but it also apply to. Uh in the scope, we will see that it also applies to other type of asset institutions as well. The standard shall apply to all transfers between investment pools related to and where material between significant categories of. When we say significant categories of, it means that even the U R I. In some countries and some banks, you will have a practice where the U R I that is a restricted investment account may have twenty different pools. Similarly, there can be pools based on different currencies, say pools based on different type of investments, et cetera. So considering considering these things, it is also possible that within the. Within quasi-equity or within off-balance sheet assets under management, you can have more than one categories. This standard transfer, the the standard uh the standard transfer for the purpose. The assets transferred for the purpose of the application of this standard include all monetary and non-monetary assets. And as I mentioned, it will apply to banks, but also apply to asset management and investment banks. Uh any other type of like, you know, any other type of Islamic financial institution which has. Multiple funds being managed within the institution or sub-funds being managed within the institution and it will include the Kafal et cetera as well. I can see some people have comments on the chat window. So honestly, I don't know if there is a question. Uh I in the question, I honestly cannot take those questions from the chat window. I cannot go to all that discussion. So if anybody has put questions in the chat window, please kindly copy that in the Q and A tab. Uh now coming to the important definition, investment pool in that specific context of the standard comprises of distinct assets. Whose risks and rewards wholly or proportionately are attributable to the funding provided by respective investors. Within owner's equity, quasi-equity and off-balance sheet assets under management of an institution, it is generally a virtual entity. Now, from our perspective, because the set of stakeholders for this is different. So it is a virtual entity and at times the separate reporting entity means that in some situations, it can be a separate reporting entity and reported in a different form. But at times it will not be having a full reporting entities. For example, yeah, in some of the some of the restricted investment accounts. May become a reporting entity as well. Uh some of the if anything takes form of a legal entity, that becomes a completely different institution. But even without taking a form of a legal entity, it can become a separate reporting entity as well in some situations. Uh but generally speaking, all investment pool are a virtual entity. Being a virtual entity means that they have a set of owners in form of equity or quasi-equity, et cetera. Who are under a contract like you know Mudarba, Musharka, et cetera. And who own the risks and rewards incidental to ownership of the underlying assets. Monetary assets in the specific context of the standard uh include cash, contractual right to receive cash on another monetary asset and contractual right to exchange a monetary asset. With another institution or entity. Uh non-monetary assets in the specific context of the standard for the computation of tangibility ratio in line with Sharia principles and rules may include tangible assets. Uh that is assets that are physical such as property, plant and equipment. Uh property, plant, equipment and inventory, equity instruments, Sukuk or other instruments whereby the majority of lying assets are tangible assets. And intangible assets, for example, right of use assets. Sharia principles and rules, A O P has a Sharia principles and rules definition, which is defined and in form of a hierarchy comprising of A O P Sharia standards. Country Sharia regulations, central Sharia boards rulings and financial accounting standards of A O P. Uh insofar as these have Sharia requirements and the last is the Sharia board of the institution. This hierarchy is standard across U P accounting and governance standards. So we do, we have just put it in the footnote instead of defining it again completely. Tangibility ratio in the specific context of the standard is the ratio defined by an institution in line with Sharia principles and rules acceptable for the purpose of transfer of an asset or a bundle of asset. From investment pool to another when it involves debt. Now, let me give you an example. We all know that selling of debt is a selling of debt at a price other than par value in Sharia is not acceptable. According to certain certain scholars, a sale of debt is not acceptable, but A O P uh A O P has a specific standard on sale of debt. Now, sale of debt standard has puts all these conditions with regard to when an asset can be transferred, uh which asset which is in form of debt. Can be transferred and at what conditions it can be transferred to the counterparty and how it will be like you know treated. So from that perspective, it is very, it is very imperative to understand that cash that are receivable. Cannot be exchanged against cash unless it is equal to par value of the receivable. Now, par value for Murabah receivable might include the profit. So for example, I purchased the goods for hundred and sold for one twenty. So my par value of receivable is one twenty and now but what that one twenty is to be received after one year. Now, if I want to transfer that Murabah asset, Murabah receivable to the to and to another outside party. The sale of debt standard applies. But here we have clarified that since the stakeholders of different pools are different and they have. Uh they they have different ownership structures. So from that perspective, each pool is a virtual entity. So the tangibility ratio related requirement for sale of debt also apply on the on the internal transfer. So what happens that if I transfer only a Murabah receivable, I cannot transfer it at a net value. I have to transfer it at the par value. Net value may include the. Um may include the deferred profits with regard to that because the deferred profit of is of twenty in my example is to be amortized over a period of one year. But but since sale of debt is prohibited in Sharia, it bet value different than the par value, so it is not practicable. And we have seen Islamic banks and financial institutions having Sharia non-compliance is in this one. This is actually coming from the views of some of the scholars and view and that. Personal experience that I have gained and some other of our working group and board members and serious scholars who are part of the working group, they all have understood that. So from that perspective, we believe that the tangibility ratio does not apply only on that transaction with outsiders. But also with the internal stakeholders within the institution. So you cannot just transfer one one receivable at a value different than that. But what happens if you transfer a bundle of assets? So that bundle of assets can take form of a. Like you know forty percent of Murabah assets and thirty percent of Ijarah assets and thirty percent of Sukuk. So together, we can have a tangibility ratio criteria met here. Now, sale of debt is standard as a tangibility ratio criteria for making things tradable normally at fifty one percent. And in case of Sukuk, it makes it like you know that fifty one percent being non-tang- being tangible assets. Non-monetary assets. So from that perspective, it is even possible that uh it is uh it is. Uh it uh Sukuk perspective, uh a temporary relaxation of up to thirty three percent is required. This is not a Sharia standard. So we are just saying that tangibility ratio applied should be disclosed and accounting policy should be considering. These disclosures and all these things and tangibility ratio. Uh you should disclose and you should mention about the tangibility ratio being followed. So transparency has to be there, but this is the accounting standard. Accounting standard cannot go in more detail than that. So from that perspective, we have talked about disclosure and some minimum requirements with regard to tangibility ratio. And again, as I mentioned, that some of the accounting standards may contain some deterrence with regard to wrong practices. So having a des- tangibility ratio requirement here actually creates a uh creates a deterrence on that. And again, I will say that the the brother who talked about I F R S, I would like to mention that honestly. Uh we would love to apply I F R S if I F R S i- it was going to address all these issues. Unfortunately, I F R S for I F R S Islamic finance industry is very small and they do not. Consider the Sharia requirements and these specific business model issues of Islamic finance and that is why. A O P standards are necessary and actually that is why we believe that. A O P accounting standards are equally important to be adopted. Uh it's not sufficient that you just adopt A O P Sharia standards because. Having Sharia standards in place cannot be fully implemented unless you don't have the. Uh don't have the uh the governance and control requirements which are contained in A O P's governance standards. Unless you don't follow the good ethical practices which are contained in A O P's ethic ethics standards. It will not work unless you try you record and transact and report and be transparent in line with the. Uh accounting requirements which are suited for those Sharia compliant transactions and structures. Which actually come from the A O P accounting standard and that is why we believe that all of it and along with the A O P's auditing and Sharia auditing standards. It also it actually works as a combined sort of uh combined sort of you know. Come uh you know, a a bu- a bunch of standards which complement each other. And again, I do not want to address this issue about whether I F R S adoption can be suited for Islamic finance or not. But I can I can assure you that if we if we had any reasons to believe that I F R S adoption can be enough for Islamic finance. We would have uh decided not to develop any standards and again, why to take these additional pains? You know, uh developing standards is always a cost and uh or and headache. And and any any institution or country adopting A O P and accounting standards don't pay for it. So it is just an effort that we do for ensuring that the industry works on the right direction. And again, A O P's A O P's operations are funded by all institutions around the globe. But my point is that having a new standard for the sake of having a standard and having a new standard. Uh like you know that it may generate some revenue for A O P, nothing like this happens. Only thing that what we try to do here is to do the right things in line with Sharia principles and rules because Sharia is paramount for us. Now, first section talks about adoption and consistent application of accounting policies. An institution shall adopt and consistently apply accounting policies in respect of transfer of assets between various investment pools in line with the requirements of this standard. And relevant A O P phases and applicable Sharia principles and rules, fully considering the business model of the institution as well as the contractual arrangements with the respective. Stakeholders. General presentation and requirements in FAS one and other A O P phases are to be applied. Then we have uh an institution shall disclose in reasonable details the accounting policies adopted in respect of transfer of assets between investment pools. Such disclosure of accounting policy shall include as applicable the following categories. So there are three types. Owner's equity, quasi-equity, off-balance sheet under asset management, but within them, there can be more categories also. So we have def- we have listed what are the minimum set of accounting policies. If they do not apply to your institution, you do not need to disclose them, but if they apply to your institution, then you have to take all the six. So transfer from owner's equity to category or investment pool within quasi-equity and vice versa. Transfer from owner's equity to a category of investment pool within off-balance sheet asset under management and vice versa or transfer within categories of owner's equity. Even within categories of owner's equity, you can have maybe Sharia compliant preferred shares, you can have more than one pool within the owner's equity. And you can have, uh for example, tier one Sukuk, uh which are based on a Mudarba or Musharka model. So there can be still different options within the equity. Transfer from a category or investment pool within quasi-equity to a category or investment pool of off-balance sheet asset under management and vice versa. And transfer from a category or investment pool within quasi-equity to another for a category of or investment pool within quasi-equity. So we are talking about quasi-equity to quasi-equity. Uh like like a normal pool, U R I pool to F I A, that is financial street motion pool or H H N W I, high net worth individual pool. Uh transfer from a category or investment pool within off-balance sheet assets under management to another category or investment pool of of. Or investment pool within off-balance sheet assets under management. So these are the six, actually nine is to nine will be. Na- uh the threes to three would be nine, but actually if you if you see it looks like this, if you make a graph. So actually, these are the six which cover all the nine type of transfers. Uh sister Galia has another question, is it possible to put in the appendix a matrix of asset transfer between investment pools and impact of each transfer? Uh sister Galia, actually, uh uh what would be contained in that matrix? Please, if you can try to like, you know, uh try to put a bit more like, you know, uh detailed in your question or comment. Then uh then it's the idea seems interesting, but to be honest, what would be contained in that, I'm not very clear. So I'm not closing your question. I would request you to kindly add this, you know, some. Uh some comment to this that what type of information you are expecting in that. Presentation and disclosure in the financial statements or disclosure should include the basis and reason that govern the transfer of assets. So the basis and reasons. So we are not saying that you apply this base or this reason only. That is, as I mentioned, it has to come from Sharia, from regulation, from governance standards and from contractual arrangement. But accounting, we are just asking that what are the basis and reasons to transfer? Tangibility ratio and other restrictions applicable to transfer of asset between investment pool in line with Sharia principles and rules. Uh see any restriction in line with Sharia principles and rule on short term transfer of assets with expected return to the original investment pool to avoid a buyback transaction. Sister Farida, I think as I mentioned, when that significant changes, we need to identify this one as a one of the Sharia issues, okay? Now, let me explain this to the participants. So now, for example, uh there is a liquidity crunch. So I have right now only one investment pool, that is U R I pool. I took out one Sukuk from that and I needed one million B D from a financial institution. So I created a F I pool for that financial institution. I took out that Sukuk and transferred it to that investment pool. And from that, I am giving return to that F I deposit for one month. After one month, that F I pool will close. The where the asset goes. Normally, if I have only one pool, then the asset comes back to me in the original pool. Now, the question is, is it a buyback? If we consider the U R I pool as a separate virtual entity and the F I pool as a separate virtual entity. And only the asset was transferred for one month. At times it is only for seven days, at times it can only for three days. We have seen these things in the market practices, even if it is three months or six months. It is because even if it is three for less than three months or six months, it is less than the period which is normally defined by Sharia scholars to of one year. to, of one year to avoid the buybacks with regard to the tangible assets, like in case of Ijarah, Ijarah, with some leak with sale and lease back, scholars normally require one year of, one year of, like you know, the minimum time of lease. So the question is, whatever type of instrument it is and whatever type of, type of transaction, like you know, this, this transaction structure is underlying this instrument. But the question is, is this one month transfer or seven days transfer or two weeks transfer or three months transfer? Is it a type of buyback? Unfortunately, we believe that some of these may become a buyback transaction and which may be subject to Sharia requirement, Sharia restrictions. And some of them, these may not be considered fully compliant with Sharia as we understand the requirements of AOF standards, et cetera. So this is one of the challenges that has to be addressed. And again, from accounting, we are not putting the restrictions. Rather, we are just saying that the restrictions, if any, which are there on this one should be disclosed. It is more like a deterrent that you need to disclose any restrictions. Any restrictions and any specific valuation approaches applied to transfer monetary assets in line with Sharia principles and rules, as I, as I talked about, like you know, with the tangibility ratio and that. So I think sister, sister Farida, B and D should be together and C should be after that. Because B and T, B and D are more related to each other. Treatment of changes and classification of investment in Sukuk. Now, this is another example. Now, what happens that I have a head to maturity instrument? Now, head to maturity instrument is not carried at fair value. Now, if I transfer that head to maturity instrument to another pool, what happens that technically, this pool is not having it at head to maturity. The other pool, if it takes, if, if it is transferred at, 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 at the amortized cost value, which is not the fair value, it might be injustice to the, to one of the, one of the pools. And if it is transferred on fair value basis, then what happens about the overall accounting by the institution which was being done on a HTM basis? So this is a very important and, and actually very complicated issue at times. That some of the instruments which are kept in one pool may be subject to like, you know, another requirement. Like another example is that, that the, an institution has a subsidiary in a foreign country, for example, even in the same country. Okay, let's take a simple example, in the same country doing a business similar to, not, not like, you know, another type of financial institution or doing a real estate business or something else. We have some examples like this. Now, what happens that being a subsidiary in the books of the, in the books of, separate books of account, we are not talking about the consolidated books because normally the profit and loss distribution is that based on the separate books or standalone books of account, not based on the consolidated books of account. So considering this thing, if I, if I transfer subsidiary shares partially, not fully. Because there is, there is need for more assets in the investment pool because there is, like you know, there are, for example, some of the investment assets in the investment pool are matured or if additional Uria deposits have come in. So there is a gap between the assets and the, and the cash. And you cannot immediately create new assets, so you have to transfer some of the assets from the shareholders pool. Now, if you transfer the, the, the shares of the subsidiary which is not preferred, but still if you transfer the shares of subsidiary which is allowed, not preferred but allowed. So if you transfer that, what accounting will apply to that? Because in the shareholders pool, you are accounting it at, at cost only. With, with only dividends coming in, dividend will come at the end of the year. So if you transfer it now, there will be no profit on that. Similarly, the fair value of that instrument, that, that share might be quite high or maybe quite low as compared to the carrying value. If it is quite low than the carrying value, then we can expect there will be impairment also. So you can expect that, okay, you take with impairment. But the management may say, no, it's a new subsidiary and in the long-term future, we do not expect an impairment because we have a good cash flow model with that. So even if the fair value is less, there is no impairment on that. So what applies, what accounting treatment should apply when you transfer it at the fair value? Or if you don't transfer it at fair value, would it be justice with the investment account holders? And it can be the other way around as well, that the fair value can be much higher. But the value at which you are carrying in your books is not the same. In case of associate, you may be applying the equity method of accounting, but that equity method of accounting is not equal to the fair value. So if you transfer it at, to the, to this, to the, this pool, you do not know, even the equity method of accounting requires financial reporting at those days. So you may not have the financial reporting of that equity method-based accounting available today. It might be three months old financial reporting, it might be two months old financial reporting. Because these are not subject to very frequent financial reporting, but the fair value is subject to very frequent changes. So these type of instruments may have a different accounting treatment in one of the pool and the other pool may have different investment objectives, which may require fair valuation. And at the same time, it is also possible that the difference between the fair, between the carrying value and the fair value is material, which means that one of the, one of the respective pools is being, like you know, is, is, is subject to injustice. And the other one is getting undue advantage because of this transfer. So this is something which is very important that was, that at times when you change, when you transfer one asset from another, even according to the risk appetite and the approach of being applied by the other, other pool, you might even need to change the classification of those assets. So from cash, you need to, maybe you need to move it to, from, from cost basis, you need to move it to fair value basis or from HTM to, to available for sale, for example. I think we have some questions in the Q and A tab. Let me take those questions. Okay, let me try to first complete because this part, let me complete this, this para only. The commitments and restrictions applied by the mutual contractual relationship between investors of various investment pools that also need to be disclosed. The basis applied by institution in valuing the assets to be transferred and the rationale in line with relevant AOF phases and applicable Sharia principles and rules and the respective business model in case such valuation is different from fair value. So these are the disclosure requirements, main disclosure requirements with regard to that. And then we, these are the, these are the qualitative information. Accounting policy and accounting policy related. But then in the next section, we have the quantitative data related requirement which might be difficult for some of the institutions. We would like to listen to the, to the, to the, to the, to the views of the market with regard to this quantitative data in particular. So but before moving to the quantitative data, let me take the questions. Sister Galia Shami has said that can I send the metrics? I'm thinking of via email. For sure, sister. It will be very good if you can share the, 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 the matrix by email to, to, either to me directly or better, better if you can send it to accounting@AOF.com. So we'll take your comment to the working group and we'll see how value. I'm sure that it will be adding value. The only thing will be how we can incorporate it and whether or not the working group agrees with that. So we will highly appreciate if you can send that matrix by, by, by email. Thank you very much, sister, again. Brother Saulal Fodhar has again put a question. Brother Umar, is the PSI A considered as separate entities? Brother, we are saying virtual entities. Virtual entity mean that we believe that the ownership structure of the underlying assets is different from the normal ownership structure of the institution. But they all are operating within the same institution. They are not taking legal form of a different company. So the, the corporate entity is only the Islamic financial institution or the Islamic bank. But within that Islamic bank, there are multiple set of stakeholders having ownership of multiple assets. So it is not one single ownership structure and it's not one single set of underlying assets in which everybody is having a share. So it's not like the, like for example, in, in a normal company where I do the trading business or manufacturing business, the shareholders, all of them share proportionately the ownership structure of the underlying assets and they share proportionately the profit and losses, even they, they do not have any profit loss distribution mechanism different than the proportionate profit. Everybody gets a proportionate profit on their shares. However, for Islamic bank or Islamic financial institution, at times there are different ownership structures in form of quasi-equity, et cetera, in which the underlying assets are different. So it is quite possible that my Uria account is invested in one pool and your Uria account is invested in another pool and my investment pool ends up in losses while yours is, remains in profits. This is even possible within Islamic financial institution. It is also possible that the investment account holders gets profit and the shareholders get a loss. It is possible because their investment pools are different. And more than that, there is a common example on which lot of people actually criticize Islamic banking, that it is quite possible that Islamic bank shareholders are making huge profits and the investment account holders getting very little bit of profit. So all these situations actually are happening because there are different ownership structures within the institution and there are different profit and loss distribution mechanism applicable to those different ownership structures. From that perspective, brother Saul, this standard is to be read in line with the requirements of the FAS twenty seven, which is already there. This is FAS twenty one and FAS twenty seven being revised in form of four standards. So the outcome, which is like part of the same product, the project is, this is standard plus quasi-equity standard plus off-balance sheet asset under management standard plus control standard. So these are actually the outcomes of the same project. And again, the quasi-equity, like you know, we have clarified here in this standard that these are virtual entities. Virtual entity in our understanding is, and, and, and a set of a pool of assets or assets and or liabilities which is owned by a set of stakeholders, but it does not take form of a legal entity separately. I think I'm, I'm clear on this part, brother Saul. And then we have a question from Abdul Hafiz Al-Bahassani. Can you transfer the asset from conventional investment to Islamic investment? It is a good question. It is possible that actually there is a conventional institution that has Islamic window and that conventional institution may have a asset which is Sharia compliant. We are assuming it is, that it is, it is part in the conventional, but it is Sharia compliant. And the, the institution transfers it to the window, Islamic window. As per AOF, even Islamic window is a virtual entity. You need to read AOF standardized FAS forty on Islamic windows, which actually clarifies separate financial reporting requirements, et cetera, for the window. So it is, yes, it is possible that if the conventional has a Sharia compliant investment, so or there is an investment which becomes Sharia compliant over a period of time. So for example, it was, it is an investment in a real estate entity and that real estate entity is now Sharia compliant. So you want to pass on that investment to Islamic window. That is actually possible. So yes, you can transfer that asset to Islamic window and that Islamic window will allocate it either to the owner's equity within the Islamic window or to an investment pool within the Islamic window. Yes, it is possible, but it is very rare. Now, coming to the quantitative disclosures, an institution shall disclose in reasonable details. Again, we, we, we know that some of these details are difficult. So we said in reasonable detail and for sure, we are asking about the material information. So an institution shall disclose in reasonable details the cumulative quantitative information for the period in respect of the following. The cumulative amounts of transfer between or where material between significant categories of owner's equity, quasi-equity and or off-balance sheet asset management at net transfer value and respective gains or losses recognized in the respective categories where applicable as well as difference between the net transfer value and the fair value of such assets if the net transfer value is different from the fair value. This is a difficult disclosure. We, we believe that maybe in future AOF need to provide some guidance on this one. Sister Farida, I think we discussed it earlier as well. For this one, probably we need to provide a narrative, a disclosure format. I think we need to provide with the illustrative financial statements once this standard is finalized. Just make a note of for system Marjan and team for this one. The valuation differences resulting from the transfer of assets in foreign currencies and the financial effect of those transfers. The nature in terms of significant assets transferred and whether, whether these assets are divisible, separable and any related Sharia principles and rules applied as well as the disclosure of significant assets proportionately divided between obvious material, between significant categories of owner's equity, quasi-equity and or off-balance sheet asset center management. At times, this is possible that some assets are, are, are material. And at, at times, it is possible that those assets, although these are not divided, but they are divided in terms of ownership structure between two, two investment pools. So this is something that at times happens. It's not very common, but, but this also we have put in as a disclosure requirement. Transfer of assets and transaction conducted with related parties indicating nature of the relationship. This is again a very important issue. Again, it's more of a governance and justice and equity issue, but this has to, cannot be addressed even on the governance side unless the disclosure is not there. So let me give you an example. There is Islamic bank which has, which has low rate of return for employees. So the, the rate that they charge for the commercial customer is eight percent, while for employees, they charge only two percent. Now, the banks put that, that, that pool of, pool of financings, like for example, car financing to the employees, which is at two percent instead of eight percent, which is commercial rate, they put it in the unrestricted investment accounts pool. Which means that the average return of unrestricted investment accounts went down. And while the bank was compensating its own employees, or in some situation, the bank was, the bank has given a discount in rate to an associated entity. So the normal rate is eight percent, but the bank has given financing to the associated entity on five percent. Now, if you put that five percent yielding Ijarah asset or other asset in the Uria pool, it means that you are jeopardizing the right of the Uria pool. You are giving them net return because of an advantage which is going to your employees or to your related parties, which mean that that impact should have been taken by you, not by the Uria. So in that situation, first, it should not happen. And if it happens, there should be a compensation to Uria for that. So you should be like, you know, compensating the difference between the commercial rate and the discounted rate to your associated undertaking or related party or, or employees. But what we are asking here is the disclosure. So transfer of asset transaction conducted with related parties indicating the nature of the relationship type of transaction, the total value of these transaction at beginning and end of the financial period and financial effect, whether recognized or recognized in line with the respective accounting policies and relevant Sharia principles and rules. Sister Farida, just remind me in the quasi, yes, the quasi-equity standard, I think we have this similar disclosure just on the, on the other side of this disclosure. But just make a note of it so that we don't miss it out, okay? So with that, we reach towards the end of the standard. The effective date that we are proposing is one January twenty twenty five. In twenty twenty three, actually in twenty twenty two, and we issued all the, all of these four standards as exposure draft. This year, we are conducting public hearings on all of them and we intend to finalize them by the end of twenty twenty four, which means that, twenty twenty three, we, we intend to finalize by the end of twenty twenty three or maximum by beginning of twenty twenty four. Which means that from the date of exposure draft, there is nearly two years in effective date and, and in case of, in case of finalization, nearly one year will be there or more than one year will be there. But still, we would love to have any comment with regard to the effective date. If you feel that this standard along with other standards need more time for implementation, please let us know either by comments now or through, through your comments that you can provide in writing. Brother Ikram Mohammed has said, thanks. Shubhrenjazila lakum. Thank you very much, brother Ikram, and thanks for being here with us. With that, I think we have completed the body text and obviously it will, it will, it will, this standard will override the earlier standard. I think, I, 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 I think we have a little bit of time so we can take some questions from the participants. Anybody has a comment or a question they want to raise, or anybody want to say something? We have brother Latif Ibrahim, his hand is raised. So I think you can allow him to speak. Please, brother, Abdul Latif Ibrahim, you are allowed to speak, I believe. You can unmute yourself and speak.
Now you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, brother.
Hi, thank you very much. Again, for the chance, my question is that by the end of, it's not a question, but request us, by the end you gonna send us a report in email or something like? report in email or something like this of the presentation?
The presentation normally we do not share because it's exactly the same as the exposure draft. The exposure draft is available in PDF format at AOFI website. Sister Farida or Sister Noof, if you can just put a link to the exposure draft. So brother Abdul Latif, it is exactly the same. So as a policy, we do not share it because we because we do not want any confusion. The PDF version of the presentation is already available. And you can you can always have access to it on our website. Sister Farida or Sister Noof will put right now, they will put in the chat window a link to the standard itself. I think they have already put it. Then brother Handamir has raised his hand. Brother Handamir, please. Yes, brother Omar. Have you here and please go ahead.
Yes, yes, brother Omar. Thank you so much for the presentation and in the interest of the respected participants, a question to you, brother Omar. Basically, two questions. Tell us how far, for example, the Islamic banks in Bahrain and Qatar and a few other jurisdictions that follow AOFI from the standards in actual application of the transfer of assets in investment pools. So how far the practice is? I know that the standard actually came about because of the issues in the pool management in Islamic banks, but tell us about the the extent of the the problem or of the challenge in the Islamic banks. That's first. And the second question.
Can we take one by one, brother Handamir? Can we take one by one your questions?
Yeah, but the second question is related. Just just yeah, so now how about the banks in other jurisdictions that follow IFRS? How do they tackle internally this issue?
Brother Handamir, in a nutshell, there are two points. Number one, as AOFI, we are standard setters. And while we are now planning more and more towards evaluating the impact assessments of our standards and we are planning to develop country reports on on the effect of AOFI standards as well as the significant standards or the bunch of standards, we are planning to do impact studies on that. But as of now, we do not have any means of evaluating this. And particularly, I would like to mention that this standard in particular, for some of the standards, I can even see from the financial statements whether they are complied with or not. But with regard to this standard, as of now, in the absence of the disclosures that we are asking, there is no means to assess what is actually happening. You you got my point, brother Handamir, that as of now, unless you have you have access to the bank itself and you can go and talk to their finance and Sharia guys and the pool management team and you ask them and try to understand them, which we tried to do while developing the standard. So in developing the standard, we involved involved experts and we had some discussions and we involved like, you know, even my own personal experiences that I have from the Sharia audit and audit side. From all these things, we actually came up with these sort of things and obviously these were discussed with the Sharia and all that. But as of now, with regard to this standard particularly, I have no means to evaluate whether it is there. However, one thing I can tell, the existing standard twenty one, although it is comparatively you know, it's disclosure requirements are comparatively loose, comparatively easier, still at the level of compliance, I didn't see into many of the financial statements in the countries where AOFI standards are adopted. So that is my general observation. And again, this is again cannot, this is not possible by AOFI. It is something that has to be addressed by the regulators as well as auditors that the institutions are complying with the requirements, particularly in the countries where AOFI standards are adopted. So so the practices have weaknesses and that was the reason that we are coming up with the improved standard. And yes, we know that as of now, the disclosure level is not good and in the absence of not having appropriate disclosure, whether it is happening in the right way or not, we cannot assess that. Thank you very much, brother Handamir, for your question and I hope I can clarify my part. I know that it's not complete answer to your thing because it's like, you know, disclaimer of opinion, partially.
No, no, brother Omar, that's why that's why I actually said the problem and challenge because we know that the this is and that's why this standard is actually of a huge importance to Islamic beings in the region and those that follow AOFI and even those that follow the IFRS. So thank you so much.
Even anybody who doesn't follow AOFI.
Exactly, exactly.
They still need to learn from this standard because this is pure, this is the pure business model of IFIS. It is how the business model need to be reflected in financials. Even if you don't follow AOFI, still you need to find some ground to find similar disclosures within IFRS. Because this is what you are doing already. You are doing multiple pool management. So this all is happening at the back end. Only thing is you are not showing it. We are asking it to show. Even if anybody is following IFRS, they need to find the ways to show it. But to be honest, we have like, you know, we have not consciously made effort to to focus on IFRS side because we limit to our framework. But yes, this is something both have to do. Brother Handamir, you have another question?
No, no, that was the question and thank you so much once again.
Thank you, brother. Then I can see some of the comments coming in the in the question and Q and A tab. So let me take those. So first is by brother Sayyid Imtiaz Abba Susein. How first welcome brother brother for being with us. How for assets of conventional which are assumed to be Islamic way of maintaining to be acceptable in Islam at the time of conversion Islamic assets? Brother Imtiaz, let me give you an example, very quick example. There can be there can be an investment in a real estate company. And that investment, for example, is 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 like five percent of the holding. I'm just giving example. Now that if that real estate company was was is is fully compliant or has now become fully compliant. And the conventional want to transfer this holding to Islamic window because Islamic window may need more assets, more good assets on the asset side. And may have more more of the urea and less of the assets available right now. So there is no harm in transferring that one to the Islamic window and then from the Islamic window, it can be placed in the appropriate pool. This is quite possible and I don't think there is a problem. Only thing is that you need to make sure that the asset that is being transferred is is Sharia compliant. Another example is real estate investments by a conventional bank. Some of the investment, some of central banks don't allow the banks to have real estate investments. But you can have a building and for example, you are using five floors for the head office and five floors are rented out. Though the floors which are rented out are eligible to be accounted for as as investment property. Now that investment property, if the use of that investment property is for Sharia compliant businesses and there is no issue of like, you know, contractual contractually any like risk of Sharia non-compliance, then there is no harm that if there is enough money available on the Islamic window side and some of the Islamic pools may have excess liquidity. In that situation, there is no harm in transferring that investment property to the Islamic window and Islamic window can place it to one of the pools. So I think this these are just very quick examples and I believe that it will, it serves your purpose, brother. Sister Galia has another comment and do the equity categories mentioned in paragraph D of law seven mean the transfer between equity items or transfer between tier one and tier two calculated records with Islamic capital adequacy standard, this is by IFSB. Sister Galia, again, always I highly appreciate for senior people like you attending and giving very good comments, highly appreciated. Tier two will not be in accounting. I think that most of tier two will not be going to equity in accounting purposes. It will be equity only for capital adequacy purposes. But tier one, if they meet the criteria of equity under IFRS and AOFI standard, they can be put in the equity extent. So yes, it is possible that there can be more than one classifications within equity to which one some of the assets can pertain. And yes, this is possible that you can have transfer between two 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 categories of equity. Even it is possible that you can you may have more than one issues of of tier one Sukuk. So you can have a musharaka Sukuk on tier one basis. And you can have a musharaka Sukuk on tier one basis which was issued two years later. The first one is maturing. Now, the first one is maturing. So the underlying assets of that may be transferred to the second second Sukuk. It is quite possible. So from that perspective, I still believe that yes, there are possibilities. However, the classification it will not be as per IFSB. The classification will be as per AOFI accounting standard that what meets the criteria. So most of the tier one which have no port option in the hand of the investor and have either perpetuity or or convertibility or a part or like, you know, or a combination of perpetuity and convertibility, those will normally be eligible for being equity. So some of the tier two which are considered for capital for capital adequacy purpose may not be eligible for be to be to be accounted for in equity under AOFI or even under IFRS. I I believe I am able to respond to your question, sister. Thank you again very much for a very important, very pertinent question. We have brother Ibrahim Daoud Muzayyan. Thank you AOFI for arranging and for thank you very much, brother Ibrahim. And it's a work pleasure that we are having people like you attending here. There is comment from Andrei Jura Juraflio. Regulators have this access. If they follow AOFI, do they question banks' decision and asset allocation to the best of my your knowledge? I know some regulators who who also perform some Sharia-related assessments during the during the Sharia-related assessments during the onsite onsite inspections. So I know that even even one of my my first major experience in Islamic finance was developing Sharia compliance inspection manual for the central bank. So so some central banks actually consider these aspects of Sharia compliance, etc. Those who consider these aspects of Sharia compliance, I can tell you that I know that they at times go into these details. But this applies to a limited number of regulators. The majority, as of now, I don't think that they are going in this much detail. But I would like to mention one more thing. It's not only the Sharia issue. It's also the issue of stability of the system. It's also the issue of the fair treatment with the stakeholders. And while regulators have this responsibility to to maintain justice and equity with the stakeholders from that perspective, even if they don't want to go for Sharia compliant aspect, I would like to say that they still have requirement as as per their mandate of of safeguarding the interest of the of the of the investment account holders to go in these details. So this is my submission to regulators who are present here and like, you know, who adopt AOFI standards. That even if you don't want to go in these details from Sharia perspective, you might need to go in these details from the fairness and equity perspective, which is your core mandate. Doctor Idris Mohammed Idris has also thanked us. Thank you very much, brother. Mohammed Taher, some Islamic banks after repossessing the collateral offered to them and not recover fully recovered fully their outstanding areas. They go further to recover additional collateral beside the one offered to them like guarantees of family members if so allowed. Brother Taher, my my quick answer to this is that if it is contractual allowed, contractually allowed, or if it is required for the purpose of rescheduling or or creating rollovers of transactions, then I don't think there is any harm in that. Because obviously, the Islamic banks are also having the money from the public. And if if one of the invest, if one of the customers defaults, it impacts dozens of, you know, investment account holders whose earnings go down. So it is not my own money. It is the money of the investment account holders mainly up to seventy to eighty percent. So it is not that Islamic banks cannot be too much like, you know, flexible in that. But yes, in the real situation of iflas or bankruptcy, they should be like, you know, giving giving leverage according to Sharia requirements because the Sharia has as per the teachings of Holy Quran, in case of real iflas or real bankruptcy, flexibility needs to be provided first in terms of payment term and secondly by waiving the receivables. We have comment from brother Musa, Musa Abdul Kisaau. Thank you for presentation and for promoting Islamic finance. Thank you very much, brother Musa, for being with us and it is our our like, you know, pleasure and our responsibility and thank you very much, highly appreciated. Sister Galia also mentioned, thanks and you are welcome, sister. Brother Sayyid Imtiaz Abba Susein has another comment. Under depressed economic situation, current value of pool assets will be much lower than the carrying value. So difference of amount will be recovered from shareholders account and they will hit the financial badly. Is there any financial projection for shareholders in this scenario? Brother Sayyid Imtiaz Abba Susein, there are two different situations. One is what is exact requirement of Sharia? According to exact requirement of Sharia, the law is to be borne by the investment account holders. What is the business model? The business model is that there should be proper profit smoothing techniques including the IRR and PR. AOFI does not recommend or does not promote the shareholders to take that hit. However, AOFI promotes having good risk management mechanism to plan for the for the rainy days. You know, in line with the teachings of the Holy Quran and Sunnah, you need to be risk averse, you need to plan for the rainy days. And from that perspective, we have our standard number FAS thirty five on on risk reserves. And even our governance standards require that you should implement good governance practices. Our new upcoming governance standard on investment accounts also covers the risk reserves, etc. In reasonable detail, requiring that appropriate risk risk management mechanism with risk reserve should be there. IFSB as other Islamic finance infrastructure body being our sister entity also has their own requirements with regard to the profit smoothing and risk management, including maintenance of reserves, PR and IRR in particular. So from that perspective, for us, it is very important that in the good days you keep, you maintain good reserves in order to manage the returns over a period of time because the financial assets are normally financial instruments on the asset side and normally for long term at least a large number of them. So the risk factor continues over a period of time. So the so establishing of reserves for having a proper risk averse mechanism is very important. We do not promote shareholders to take directly hit on that part, sir. Brother Salih Tella has another comment. Thank you, brother Omar, for valuable presentation in terms of building environment to support Islamic bank's management. Our pleasure, brother, and thank you very much for joining us. Brother Taher has another question. Does AOFI allow allows accounts classification as IFRS? Brother, the quick answer is we we allow adoption of IFRS. Or we prefer adoption of IFRS in any area where AOFI is silent and where there is no Sharia non-compliance issue. So the accounts classification, you are talking about, if you are talking about classification here in the meaning of impairment, etc. We have our FAS thirty which is equivalent to IFRS requirements under IFRS nine. More or less similar, but we explain them according to our business model. If you are talking about any other aspect of account classification with regard to the presentation of financial statements, we have our own standards which need to be applied. While we collaborate with IFRS, that is IASB, and we work with them, try to work with them on on the areas of mutual interest, but at the same time, we believe that they have much bigger focus and much bigger mandate as compared to Islamic finance industry. And Islamic finance industry needs adoption of AOFI financial accounting standard. So for us, answer directly based on IFRS is is is, I would say no. Except for the areas where there is no issue. Thank you very much. Brother Andre, again, thank you very much. Brother Saudal Khodeh has a comment again. Thank you for presentation about tier two Sukuk that issued based on unrestricted Mudarba is the bank proof. And ring fans the fund into particular Sharia and asset to avoid use the fund of certain some of the liabilities. Actually, tier one and tier two Sukuk which are based on Mudarba, at times we have seen that they take part in the same investment pool of urea. This has been done in some of the markets that we have observed. I can tell you that at least two, three markets, I'm aware. This is happening for tier one as well as tier two, that these are based on a district of Mudarba and they take risk on the whole asset pool. Taking risk on the whole asset pool reduce the systemic risk means that if you are taking risk on specific assets, there is a more, there is more risk of default, etc. But if you are taking risk on the overall investment pool, the portfolio theory actually actually reduces the overall risk. So from that perspective, we believe that majority of the institution that we have seen have not ring fenced it. I think I'm clear on my answer. Thank you very much again and brother Abdul Munim Aliyo, Assalamualaikum. I I really enjoyed the presentation. It's real pleasure, sir. Real pleasure that you have been with us. We have comment from brother Akbar Hakimov, Jazakumullah fair and you are welcome, sir. With that, I think that we have completed all the questions which were here. I I I don't know about chat window, but it will be difficult to take it from there. I would like to also thank, before I hand it over to Sister Farida to conclude, I would like to thank all of you in big numbers. I would like to thank all of you in big numbers to be here today. I think we had nearly four hundred registrations and I could see nearly one fifty people at a time joining in. And I think obviously that is not a unique number, so maybe roughly around two hundred people join. I can still see more than one ten people here. So for that, I would also like to thank our partner institutions for today's workshop, today's round public hearing. With that, I hand it over back to you, Sister Farida, and thank you, everybody. Assalamualaikum.
Thank you, brother Omar, for the insightful presentation and always, I'm sure the participants benefited tremendously. Special thank you to all the participants. Their comments are making this event very interactive. Thank you to our team and colleagues in AOFI. As mentioned earlier, we are holding one more public hearing for the standard, for this exposure draft in Arabic. Inshallah in October. For any written comments, please send your comments to IFRS.com. And inshallah, we see you again in the future. Assalamualaikum.